Good evening. Welcome to the April 3rd City Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. And we have a special guest here tonight to help us say the Pledge of Allegiance. Her name is Hannah Hitch. And Hannah's going to come right up here, and then we're all going to stand and join her in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay Hannah, you can turn around this way. There we go. So, would you tell us what school you go to?
I go to Stillwater Middle School.
And you are in what grade?
Sixth.
Sixth grade, Stillwater Middle School. Favorite subject?
Language arts.
Language arts. Love that. What do you do after school? Do you have extracurricular activities, or are you a member of certain things where you?
I sometimes like to go around around the block.
Okay. All right. Me too. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a meteorologist.
Awesome. Great. That's great. So, councilors, questions?
Well, I'm especially excited to hear about meteorologists. This is the time of year that we're all looking into the weather, so keep your eyes open. Warn us.
Any other questions? Okay, I have you stay right there. I'm going to take these ones. If you'll turn around this way. One more thank you to Hannah. Now we have some proclamations. And our first one is, I would like to call Grace Hunziker up here. There she is. Turn the other way. Hi Grace.
Okay. Whereas, the Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Scholarship Program is held each March to honor high school junior, high school junior young women in Payne County. This Countrywide Scholarship Program recognizes, rewards, and encourages excellence while promoting self-esteem among these young women. The Eighteenth Annual Distinguished Young Women of Payne County Program occurred on Saturday, March 4th, 2017, with ten Payne County high school juniors participating, seven from Stillwater, one from Ripley, one from Morrison, and one from Cushing. And whereas, Ms. Grace Hunziker, daughter of David and Mary Beth Hunziker of Stillwater, was selected as the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2018. And whereas, by being selected the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2018, Ms. Hunziker will be involved in community service, speaking engagements around Payne County, performing at various events, and presenting the Be Your Best Self message of self-confidence and commitment to Payne County schoolchildren. She will encourage young people to make a commitment to do their best, to be involved, to be studious, be healthy, be ambitious, and be responsible. It includes, but it is not restricted to, encouraging young people as they face the challenges of dealing with negative peer pressure and avoiding the perils of the abuse of alcohol and other drugs. And whereas, by being selected the Distinguished Young Woman of Payne County for 2018, Ms. Hunziker is automatically entered in the Distinguished Young Women of Oklahoma Scholarship Program to be held July 26th through 29th, 2017, in Bartlesville. Ms. Hunziker will compete for the Oklahoma State Title in the categories of fitness, interview, self-expression, talent, and scholastics. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the third day of April, 2017, as Grace Hunziker Day. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much for this honor. I'm very excited to represent the Young Women of Payne County, and this has been an incredible experience, and I'm really excited to see what this next year holds for me. So, thank you all very much.
Okay, next we have Lauren Nahara. You'll help me with the other names, okay? You tell me who else you want to call up here.
I would like to call up our Executive Director, Marie Abraham Robinson, and Senior Police Officer, Leah Storm with OSUPD. Thank you.
Are we all up here?
We are.
Whereas, sexual violence is a devastating and intolerable crime affecting men, women, and children of all races, ages, cultures, economic situations, and abilities. And whereas, sexual violence is a major social problem in homes, schools, and communities across the country, resulting in countless physical, mental, and other health consequences. And whereas, sexual violence seriously affects our youth, and is reported, it is reported that one out of every four girls and one out of every six boys experiences a sexual assault before the age of eighteen. And whereas, it is also reported that one in five women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted on college campuses. And whereas, the month of April has been designated to promote awareness by increasing education and community involvement to prevent acts of sexual violence. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2017, in the City of Stillwater as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Thank you Mayor. On behalf of the Board and staff of Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services, we would like to graciously accept the proclamation. We are always grateful to the city for your support, and we are proud to continue to serve Payne County and the surrounding communities, so thank you. And I'll turn it over to our Sexual Assault Counselor.
Thank you. Okay. I will be reading a summary of Senior Police Officer Leah Storm on behalf of Chief Altman and Wings of Hope. Officer Leah Storm began her law enforcement career with the OSUPD in November of 2005 after receiving a Bachelor of Science degree in applied sociology with an emphasis in criminal justice from Oklahoma State University. Since then, Officer Storm has earned her Advanced Police Certification from the Council of Law Enforcement, Education, and Training, and was promoted to the rank of Senior Police Officer in April 2013. A significant part of Officer Storm's career has been dedicated to the education and support of victims of sexual assault and domestic violence. For over nine years, she has been instructing women of all ages on the importance of situational awareness and self-defense through the Rape Aggression Defense Course, as well as numerous other presentations. She continues to expand her knowledge through specialized training and investigations geared towards victims of sexual assault. As such, she has been an active member of the Payne County Sexual Assault Response Team since 2014, and the Payne County Coordinated Community Response Team since 2010. These teams are comprised of officers from Stillwater Police Department, Payne County Sheriff's Office, Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services, Iowa Tribe Victim Services, OSU Student Conduct, and Stillwater Medical Center. She has a solid relationship with the councilors and advocates at Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services. With the support of her supervisor, she has volunteered her time with many other law enforcement associated functions and is often credited with going above the expectations of the OSU Police Department. These nonprofit groups include the Oklahoma and National Chapters of Concerns of Police Survivors, Oklahoma Special Olympics, and local community fundraisers. The OSU Police Department maintains their accreditation status through the Oklahoma Association of Chiefs of Police, due primarily through the detailed work of Officer Storm. She has also served as an Oklahoma State Accreditation Assessor since 2009, and was appointed to the Accreditation Board in 2015. Officer Storm represents our department with great pride and has positive influence on our community. Her passion, dedication, and hard work to ensure justice is served makes her a valued asset to the OSU Police Department. On behalf of our staff and board at Wings of Hope Family Crisis Services, we congratulate you on the Officer of the Year Award.
Whereas, autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, affecting more than three million people. And whereas, autism is a neurological disorder that interferes with the normal function of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background. And whereas, symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in a significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication. Whereas, doctors, therapists, and educators can help people with autism overcome challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis. And whereas, appropriate education, intervention, and therapy are vital to future growth and development of those with autism. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to ensure that individuals living with autism have access to the lifelong care and services needed to achieve their greatest potential. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim April 2nd through the 8th, 2017, as Autism Awareness Week, and April 2nd, 2017, as Autism Day in the City of Stillwater. And we urge our citizens to learn about services, programs, and opportunities to support people with autism as well as their loved ones. Whereas, April 16th, 2017, marks the forty-ninth anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title IX of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, gender, disability, familial status, national origin, and sexual orientation, or gender identity, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, the City of Stillwater is committed to support of the Fair Housing Law, Title IX of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to help assure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, I, Gina Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby declare April 2017 as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year. And I forgot to call it Valerie Silver's. Very sorry Valerie. Get up here.
Would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you for recognizing that. Thank you to Stillwater for recognizing that fair housing is an entitlement within the U.S. and in Stillwater.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do you want to take the picture? That takes us to the Consent Docket, councilors. And before I ask if anyone would like to remove everything, I'm going to go ahead and pull Item O. Mr. Dorman will explain it later. Counselors, does anyone wish to pull another item, or is there a motion to approve without Item O?
Motion to approve without Item O.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket, less Item O. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to Public Comment on Agenda Items, not Scheduled. Do we have any? Block 34 would go now. Yeah, the speakers for that? Okay. Okay. The first speaker is Richard Buchanan. And before you start, Mr. Buchanan, I would like to remind the audience of the rules for public comment. Speakers are allowed, are limited to speaking about a specific item on the agenda. Only those who signed up to speak will be allowed. Each speaker has three minutes to address the council, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address.
Well Honorable Mayor and esteemed councilors, my name is Richard Buchanan. I live at 4017 South Orchard here in Stillwater, Oklahoma. And I assure you, Madam Mayor, I'm going to keep this just so brief that you won't be able to believe it. I want to urge you to strongly consider the privatization of Block 34 through an auction sale with use restrictions attached to the sale, either in the form of zoning or covenants to run with the property, or a PUD that require development consistent with downtown in some fashion, and that prevent the possibility that we might end up with Tumbleweed Central that located in downtown Stillwater. Various private and public JVs might be possible on this property for its development. But I would urge you to consider an outright sale of it whereby you would immediately raise perhaps as much as $5 million, which could be used to improve and repair and maintain the infrastructure. And I would even further urge that you might want to make the major focus on repair of thoroughfares, repair and renovation of our major thoroughfares in the city. Please dismiss the idea of wasting several million dollars of scarce city funding to create a downtown park that nobody will use with the possible exception of vagrants and late-night partygoers after they've left downtown restaurants and drinking establishments. Neither parents nor grandparents, of which I'm one, will visit that park with kids when there's already a very nice park approximately three blocks away to the south, and there are many, many other parks in the Stillwater area. Conversion of Block 34 into a park is going to further burden an already overworked Parks and Rec Department. It will also place additional burdens on an overtaxed Stillwater Police Department, both as to effort and cost. My time is up. Please, please produce a logical outcome that most benefits Stillwater in your decision on this matter. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan. Our next speaker is Shannon Williams.
Do you mind if I pass the paper to you guys?
Absolutely.
I know probably some of you saw some of this.
Thank you Shannon.
This is similar, it's a little different. I think that's mine. My name is Shannon Williams. I reside at 823 Oak Ridge, Stillwater. I am a downtown owner, first of all, at Graze Goods, and I am also co-owner of a company called Urban Homestead, which we build the tiny tailgater. If you guys have seen that, it's great. Anyway, one of my ideas for downtown, I had heard the discussions about what to do and not wanting to do a finalized idea quite yet and commit. And also, I listened to Manager McNichol here talk about the decrease in sales tax revenues. And one of my ideas, and I know it's been implemented in other cities, is to do the shipping container ideas and retrofit them for retail stores. In your packet, I have some examples of what that could look like, and also, I know harping back on the idea of creating an arts district downtown, I also have some ideas. I think this would fit in really well with that as well. I have some preliminary drawings here of what this could look like. This is Blocks 34 with an X there, kind of cool. And we could do, our company could do some real simple, basic shipping container ideas. I also have a cost estimate sheet in there for a 20-foot and a 40-foot. Basically, the idea came about from the Riada Center moving downtown and creating a recycling ability, not only with the shipping containers, but also for new businesses. So, those people that are starting their business in the Riada Center need somewhere to go instead of spending $2,400 on a Main Street area to rent, which is really hard when you're starting a business. We could rent these a little cheaper on a short-term lease, and once they get their business up and running, recycle them back into Main Street. That's basically the idea. Still got a minute. Okay. Another thing that I had going was also to make that more artsy. We don't have to get rid of the farmer's market, I know I saw that, but we could maybe shrink that down a bit. We only have 20 vendors anyway, so I don't know if we need the entire thing, but put those there in the future if you wanted to move those. They are portable, and we could do the housing for veterans, sell them to them, or also the idea to do it for homeless shelters. So, it's not a permanent idea, but you are generating sales tax. Another thing that I have in your packet on the very last pages is art walls. This is an idea to go ahead and try to bring art, have the traveling artists do the live art downtown. That would attract a lot. Also, listening to Counselor Joyce's ideas about making it cohesive, I would also try to advocate an 8th Street for thoroughfare there, try to bring those food trucks down and connect it to downtown along with art walls. There's also one where you see people taking a picture there, and we could do that as a promotional thing. My time's up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tried to talk as fast as I could.
You did great.
Thanks.
Did great. Our next speaker is Shirley Weeks. Good evening.
My name's Shirley Weeks. I live at-
Pull the microphone just a little closer to you.
I live at 71 University Circle. I wanted you all to know how excited I am to be here on Block Night. We have a wonderful opportunity to preserve open space in one of our original town sites. I know you all are discouraged about the budget issues. They have made the decision to move forward more difficult, but it's never been easy to be a pioneer. We are planning for a historic area, so I was wondering what our forefathers or mothers might remind us, that it was never easy, they might say. It was never easy camping in Couch Park. Maybe they would say, "You made the run, you staked your claim, now start building the homestead." Land ho, forward with gusto, or something like that. But I do urge you to move forward. Thank you, I really came to thank you. I want to thank you for the long road that you've traveled. You never let the struggle stop you from the effort of finding a positive outcome. Be proud of your courage, your stamina, your hard work, and mission. The block, a very small place, made large by people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roger Gose.
Roger Gose, 1120 East Cornell. I'd just like to encourage you to do something. And I've seen some public-private partnerships, which I would like to see you pursue, get some private enterprise going on there, whether it's farmer's market, or however you can do it, generate some income, generate some sales tax, but put conditions on there that features you want to see as a city. Something happening on Block 34 that will help encourage more activity at Block 35 and around this property. The city's shedding all of its parks and multi-graffits, and you cut out three-plus-million dollars of roadwork after you got the sales tax passed. You've got a lot of needs besides some of this stuff, so I think you could combine it with that public-private and not have to spend a whole $5 million on something, but start getting that area to grow. I think once 34 and 35 get going, you'll see some changes around it, and it'll help the whole area. Thank you.
Okay, that moves us to number six. Items removed from the Consent Docket, which was Item O. I'm going to ask Mr. Dorman to weigh in on that one.
We just need to pull that item so that we can make some technical adjustments to it, and it will be back on the agenda for the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. That brings us to Public Hearings. Receive public comment regarding a request for approval of an amendment to Arbor Village, a planned unit development together with a related map amendment to rezone lots under common ownership from the O Office District to the RT Residential One and Two Family District, CC-17-48. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. McNichol.
Ms. Dennison from Development Services will be providing that report.
Good evening. Paula Dennison, Development Services. What we have before you and included in your packet is an amendment to an existing development that has a planned unit development overlay over it. This is known as Arbor Village, located 19th and Western. 19th is the street on the north side, Western is the street on the east side. The area in gold that labeled RT PUD, that is the portion of the existing development that is zoned two-family residential with that planned unit development overlay. The piece in the purple is the portion that is office with the planned unit development overlay, as well as the area to the very east of the development that serves as the detention facility for this entire development. The request before you this evening is to amend the planned unit development to rezone the commonly-owned office parcels from Office 2 RT so that they can, they can be developed as single-family, just as the rest of the existing development is. This is an overlay of how the proposal will line out currently from a- Currently, from about this lot here, where my cursor is, going north and then along the northern property of the development, that's the office area that is, when it was originally proposed, was set aside for the office-type commercial activities. These are the lots that are under common ownership. They have not been built upon. So there's one owner that owns all of these lots. They are the ones who are seeking this rezoning so that they can change the focus of these lots from office commercial to residential to go along with the rest of the development. There's also changes on the southern piece of the property. In your packets, you can see it a little clearer. There is now going to be an outlot along the very southern and very southeastern portion of these lots. What that will do is it will remove all designated floodplain from these individual house lots so that they will no longer be obligated to carry flood insurance policies on their property. And this has been done elsewhere in the city of Stillwater. And the lots have already been raised out of the floodplain. There's some paperwork that needs to be completed. But this will further allow those owners and occupants of these properties to not have those flood insurance policies. Here's a blow-up of the proposal. The preliminary PUD, once approved, it stands as the preliminary plat. So they will be going from 12 lots to 24, 12 commercial office to 24 residential with approval of the planned unit development and the map amendment. This again shows the current, as it stands. You can see the large size of these commercial lots along the northern piece and wrapping around on this side. Street view of the property, this is looking 19th, and then on Arbor Circle. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have for this request.
Counselors, any questions? No, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And we don't have anyone to speak, so at this time, I will... Oh, Kelly, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Kelly Harris.
I'll keep it short.
My apologies.
No worries. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owner tonight. Paula did a wonderful job covering everything that we're requesting. The two main goals is to be able to develop the rest of the property as it has been. The commercial land just didn't take off like the owner had wanted. And then to take the FEMA floodplain off those lots so that they can be sold and the homeowners won't have to pay that extra insurance. You have any questions?
One sort of not serious one, but they should turn those lots on the north side into parking and sell them to the soccer parents.
Yes. They would make some money. Would the city like to buy that land? Thank you.
That was not on the agenda, Counselor. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, now I will close the public hearing and ask Paula to come back.
At their last meeting, the planning commission is recommending approval of the amended PUD with map amendment.
Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the planning commission. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, that has passed. Item CC-17-48 has passed. That takes us to item B. Receive public comment regarding a request to close out 16467 CDPG, 15 Small Cities Grant, CC-17-45. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Our grants coordinator, Valerie Silvers, will provide that report.
Thank you. Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is to close out, as we've talked about, the 2015 CDPG grant. This was a grant with two projects. I'll start this here. The first project was a Lee and Hall drainage project. And this was actually part two, phase two of that project. Chester, Fern and Tucker had water lines as well on this CDPG grant. This is the first project. And it's a 1,000-foot drainage, storm drainage project. This is Hall Street over on the map and then Lee over here. And down, as you can barely see in the process, there's a drainage channel that runs all the way through that. In the beginning, it was washing out these people's backyards. And there's some sewer crossings, personal sewer line crossings in there as well. People put concrete and all kinds of things to slow that water down. The first 500 feet of that was completed with the 2014 CDPG grant. And this is the last 500 feet. We used 91,000 of it to complete this project. This is the water line project that's a part of this grant. And this is Tucker Edition. Hartford is the street here, and this is Perkins Road. There was an old rusty pipe that had their water lines down through the middle in the back lot lines. That's been abandoned, and they've all had service connections to that new line that's on Hartford. And then, and this project is another water line project. And as you can see, at the very top of this map are the city water lines. These people on Chester and Fern, this is from 15th to 16th, did not have city water lines at all. So they now have new city water lines. This is just a picture of their project. Water lines don't show up after they're completed, so there's some construction. This project served about 35 properties and about 73 residents. To summarize, the budget, the grant was worth $188,052. And the match with the grant was around $376,104. Lee and Hall used $90,747.17 of the grant. And Chester, Fern and the Tucker lines used $97,304.83 of the grant. Now, you might see that this other part doesn't quite add up. Well, the water department had a little extra. They had part of Block 14 instead of just 15 and 16 added just for simple already constructing in the area. And so it wasn't actually a part of the grant. But there's some expenditures that were match money that the water department used. This is the completed Lee and Hall project. It's really a nice area now. They've put some, this is the first 500 and this is the last. And they put some cypress trees and made it really pretty down there. You guys should go look at it. It's nice. The projects, both of them combined, cost us $381,627.35. And it did use 100% of the grant. Does anybody have any questions? It is nice, isn't it?
Nice to see.
The people out there love it.
Yes, good.
And it impacted 73 residents.
Well, and that was the water lines. This one was a little more than that, actually. Yes.
Very good. Counselors, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. That will take, I will open this for a public hearing. We don't have anyone to speak. We don't. I will close the public hearing and ask Valerie to come back.
Staff recommendation is that you accept the 16467 CDPG 15 and allow the mayor to sign the close-out documents.
Counselors, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-17-45. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, CC-... Now I can't find it, sorry. CC-17-45 passes with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
We have a report for you on Block 34, based on some of the previous comments from the council. And Director of Special Projects, John McLinnie, has that presentation.
Okay, this is based on the request from the council on January 30th at the regular council meeting and all of the elements that you asked for in Block 34. It's important to recognize a few things, as there are some assumptions in this plan and some assumptions in the phasing. One thing to remember for sure is that this is a conceptual plan. We're at the conceptual stage. Nothing in here is set in stone. And a lot of these elements are going to require architects, engineers, perhaps, private development partners. What it's meant to show you is what it could be and the basic arrangement of the elements and a reasonable approximation of costs for these elements. And each of these phases can stand alone. If we do Phase 1 and decide that we're okay with that, it doesn't have to continue. And nothing will have to be reconstructed because of an earlier phase being in the way. In the earlier phases, temporary amenities can be brought in. Temporary porta-potties, temporary restrooms, temporary stage. All of those things can be part of this plan in Phase 1. And then the community center also serves some of those purposes as it has facilities as well. So what the council's direction was on January 30th was that you wanted to see green space and play space, a small café, restrooms, a stage near the community center, space for the food trucks, farmer's market, a pavilion. You wanted to see a phased plan and then financing options. So to kind of orient the drawing, you're going to see this a lot. This is what we have currently. You've got the parking areas, the gravel parking over beside the community center. The community center's to the west. And then bounded on the south and east by Husband and Ninth. So Phase 1, based on the council's request, would be to do the electric utilities necessary to support the food trucks and future development, the water and sewer, the pavilion, grass, trees and irrigation. And Phase 2 puts in the stage and Duncan Street. Phase 3 puts in the play space. And then Phase 4, farmer's market, which the building could also include the café and the restrooms. And this is what everything would look like as it is finished. One of the things that I said at the beginning was that this was conceptual. This is an idea of what the farmer's market could look like. It could also look like that. It could also look like that, which is a recycled container development in Tulsa called the Box Yard. The stage could look like that. Could look like a picture you've seen before, which is the park in Indiana that I showed you a while back. It could also look like that for a while. We might bring in a temporary stage and use that in the area. The playground area, this is one possible version. Could be a splash pad. Could look like that. So the important part is that these things have been costed out based on these elements, approximations, reasonable approximations. But nothing has to look exactly like what is in that plan. Some people might recognize the final version of the plan because we looked at all of the plans that had been looked at, whether from ADG, Core Commercial Districts Master Plan, the Puma Plan, several private development ideas. And the Puma Plan from 2005 had everything in it that the council asked for. And so that gave us some pretty good information on how to lay things out and what to base our costs on. It had all the amenities that the council asked for. They provided cost estimates, and we adjusted those for inflation and then added some things that we knew were going to be necessary to complete Phase 1. And they also provided financing options. They listed street sales tax, a bid assessment, dedicated sales tax and general obligation bonds. One of the things they didn't list, but that we have talked about, is the possibility of partnering with private development. Then the other, another thing that a lot of the town squares and things that I showed you, they also had benefactors, not necessarily development, but someone who donated money. So the cost estimate for what you've asked for at this point is $4,776,000. Phase 1 would be $516,000. That gets the electric, water, sewer, landscape, irrigation. That phase is something that we can handle in-house. We have all the resources necessary, other than the budget. We have the expertise to handle that one in-house. Phase 2 is the stage in Duncan Street, roughly $2 million. That's one where we'll require engineering and architecture help. And then Phase 3, the play space, we probably can also handle that one in-house. And Phase 4 would also require architects and engineers. And that would be the farmer's market and the small café and the restrooms. So there you go.
Thank you, Mr. McLinnie. And so the discussion begins. Who wants to go first?
I appreciate your response to our requests in January. And I also appreciate the input of many public citizens. And even non-citizens. People come from all over the country to tell us how to do this. It's kind of interesting. You know, I do wish that, you know, I feel very sensitive to people who say, "Oh, my gosh, do we have to drag this out into all these phases again? And when are we going to do something?" We've read wonderful articles about, you know, this has been in the works for, what, 100 years? Yeah, 100 years. And it would be great to say, "This is fabulous, and we're just going to move right along." So I do appreciate the impatience and the sense of longness of planning this. But I also want to be very cautious about just doing anything, just to do it. I think whether we do it in phases with two months or five years between each phase, it's helpful just to think about it in phases. And I do have some thoughts about the phases as they're written out. And I don't want to talk the whole time, so I'll just say that.
No, keep going. Yes, well, go ahead and tell us your thoughts on the phases.
Okay, well, Phase 1 was supposed to be electric, water, sewer, landscape, irrigation. I really would rather see the retail and hopefully the restrooms way up in Phase 1. And perhaps even thinking about Phase 1 in A and B. And they could be even parallel or simultaneous rather than one after the other.
Phase A and Phase B, or A and B, is it?
Yeah, Phase 1, A and B. If we actually know, you know, we talked in January about what we wanted to see. Green space, open space and some hospitality retail. I don't see any reason to wait all the way until Phase 4. If we are committed to knowing that that's what we want, to move that retail hospitality up so that it can begin generating some income. And perhaps, you know, if with a well-written RFP, we can attract the right kind of conclusion for that. So if we did the RFP first or at the same time that we begin thinking about burying the electric, bringing the water, the sewer, I just, it's, as the space is now, it drags downtown down. It just is, you know, we did the best we could last summer. And it, something needs to happen. I'm convinced that if the city does what it can do to make it look inviting, safe, interesting, then it will be contagious across the rest of downtown. So what- So what can we do right away? I hear we can do get rid of the telephone poles, get the grass, get the gravel out. You know, if you're, if you're, any mobility challenge, you can't even walk in that block safely. So if we think we're going to do anything, it has to be at least even, walkable. And so, those are my thoughts on that and I, other thoughts on phasing, but I do want to talk about the financing options. And I'm glad that you brought up benefactor. I think donations should be at the top of the list. We have had some lovely presentations from citizens from other cities. Almost everything, every flower has a plaque on it, donated by donations. I mean, they don't have, doesn't have to be a million dollars, although we would probably take a million dollars, but every piece from citizens not only gets us closer to our goal, but it increases people's ownership in the project. And that brings people to a place. And then also partnering, partnering with private developers.
Thank you.
I'll be quiet for a moment.
No, very good ideas. Thank you.
Well, I, you did exactly what we asked you to do in January and so thank you for that. Good idea. I think what I need to be honest with the public about is I don't think in this whole time that I ever think of it as a park. And so I appreciate the public comments of shifting my thinking. I think for me, I wanted to be mindful of a green space where, as I've seen downtown grow, I decided to locate a business there almost nine years ago when it was a completely different look than what it is now. I want downtown to be a place that people can go all hours of the day, not just within certain timeframes. I want there to be a nice flow of traffic. And so for me, this, the idea of a green space with this Block 34, a lot of different kind of traffic, but I also think before we put something permanent on there, I like the idea that Shannon presented of some opportunity for some retail or some stores that could happen. We do have empty storefronts. We do have an empty, and when you're starting a business, one of the biggest challenges you have is paying the rent, it's trying to buy a building, it's the physical part. You kind of, it's overwhelming sometimes. And so to me, doing it in baby steps and having the partnership of an entrepreneurship school that will be there to help them, I think helps grow businesses and doesn't provide a permanent building for them to have to be in or be stuck in. I'd love to see them grow and then move into downtown. I'd also like to see a flow of traffic when you have food trucks or a farmer's market that invites a pathway or a flow of traffic also where people automatically go to all parts of downtown. We're still a small town in the sense of that we're not used to having to walk very many places for, and so I want us to get used to the idea that walking one or two blocks is an okay thing to do, but we have something along the way that will encourage that flow of traffic and encourage that walking. And so providing an area for the farmer's market and the food trucks to have a place to go and I think is important. And so for me, I want it to be that balance of, as we have businesses that are closing and we have to think about sales tax and that's the way our city is funded, as much as I would love to have a wonderful green space, I also understand that the green space needs to also coexist with some opportunity for us to have some revenue. And I think there's a blend and a balance we can do on that block that would allow that opportunity to happen.
Thank you, Counselor. Zanotti?
Go ahead. I'm probably going to throw some wrenches. So I've heard from folks who talked in the public hearing portion of this, which I really appreciate and we've gotten a lot of emails, I've heard many times this idea of just do something. I like that idea in lots of areas. I don't like it in this one. I don't like it in this one because of the way this got to us. This is, so I've been here a year, this is my, like, I think, year anniversary meeting. This was on here long before I was here. And so I've kind of go back through the history of it and talked to folks involved and that sort of thing and seen, you know, this, this hasn't come about, this decision and this issue for us as a city council has not come about through, this is the next step in some larger plan. It hasn't come about through, you know, we did this thing, we got that piece accomplished and now this is the next piece. This has come about by a proposal that was submitted and said, "Hey, I want to build some stuff on your, on your land." It's a great proposal. I like it. At the time, I was, I was all in favor of it. I don't like it because it's not part of a plan of any kind. It's just, we have this block, let's do something. To me, that's a problem. It's a problem that has been in Stillwater for a long time. It's been a problem, we've talked about when it came to 12th Street zoning. It's part of a problem we've got when it comes to the Form Based Code area, that we've got spots that we're just saying, "Well, this spot's ready, maybe we'll just do something with it and then we'll just see what happens next." And I don't like that in terms of city planning. It works fine in terms of development. We get something built and we go on to the next thing, that's fine. But I don't, I want to understand why we're doing this and how it relates to a larger plan for what's happening downtown. I want the rest of, you know, I want to see developments out of the 9th. I want to see some of the underused properties on Main Street. We have plenty of underused and unused and vacant properties on Main Street right now that are not getting used. How do we use Block 34 to change that stuff? And so my problem with this idea of, "We've got to do something with this lot," to me is a manufactured crisis. It is this idea that because someone came and said, "I can do something with it," now we've got to make this decision, we've got to do something right away. I want to see, you know, as we've gone through this process, Mr. McLennan, you brought up the fact that this idea sort of matches up what we planned, what people here in the city planned pretty thoroughly in 2005 with the Puma Plan, where that was a long-term, long-range plan that for all intents and purposes hasn't really been followed. But if we're talking about something that fits into this larger plan that's already been in place, what else fits into that plan? What else does that plan say about what we should be doing to improve? Because that, that plan looked at the whole downtown area and how to improve it on a, on a general level and not just this one block, right? And so if we're looking at that and we're looking, now we've made it back 12 years later to a point where we're saying, "Well, what we're talking about doing in this block actually lines up with what this plan said 10 years ago." Well, what else do we need to do from that plan? We'll take a look at this area as a whole and not just looking at this one block. So, all that to say, I just, you know, I love, you know, this is exactly what we asked you to do. I like the idea of trying to get some use out of this in the meantime, but I don't really want to put permanent structures on this block until we have a plan for how that is going to affect and how that's going to relate to the rest of the area. And what is, if we're doing this now, what's the next step? And if this isn't what needs to happen now, what's the step that needs to happen before it so we can get to this point? And that, I think, that bigger perspective on this is what we haven't, we've kind of let ourselves be, all of us, I mean, certainly myself included, kind of focus on this one block instead of trying to step back and say, "What's the point of all this? What are we trying to do with this block and how are we trying to use it as a city property, as a publicly owned property? How do we use this block to accomplish much more than just a few stores and a couple of apartments or a stage or whatever?" So whatever we do here, I'm not, I'm just not in favor of permanent stuff until we have a better idea of what does it mean for the rest of the area and how does it fit into a larger plan.
Counselor Joyce, let me just ask you, by permanent stuff, do you mean buildings or do you mean utilities?
The utilities part of it makes sense to me. I mean, I don't think that that's going to hinder us from doing something else there in the long run, but I certainly don't want to put up a permanent building that then we sort of go, "Well, actually, you know, it would be, you know, we put a little retail spot down and we go, 'Well, actually, this, this would fit better if we put an apartment,'" whatever it is. We don't know what the best way to use this block is for the rest of downtown. And I don't want to put anything that keeps us from, you know, making that determination when we're actually to a point where we can make it or more comfortable making it. Because I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I think this would be a great catalyst for other stuff happening downtown if we had this thing there. And I think that the plan suggested that then. But I don't think it is if, if it's all we're talking about. If this is all we're doing, I don't know that it catalyzes anything. I mean, if we're not ready to go to step 2 after this, then what? And so I don't think any of us are confident that we know, "Well, if we do this, it's going to lead to this next step or this next step." What's this going to do for us and how do we make sure that we're not just looking at one block at a time?
Thank you, Counselor. Joyce and Counselor Wedlock.
So, I hold Counselor Joyce's opinions in high esteem. I will respectfully disagree in this particular instance, however. So let me just take a step back here. As far as a comprehensive plan for downtown, and I'll read this verbatim from the Puma Plan subsection 5, Action Plan for Downtown. Framework summary, and I quote, "As revealed by the Core Commercial District's master plan market analysis, downtown Stillwater's viability is threatened by new retail competition and an aging customer base. An aggressive, multifaceted investment strategy is recommended to make downtown an exciting and relevant destination for all Stillwater residents. The investment strategy is guided by the following principles. Number 1, establish a central gathering place for the city. Number 2, expand recreational and educational opportunities for kids and families. Number 3, create dining and entertainment options for adults. Number 4, develop catalytic civic amenities that will encourage new private investments in downtown. Number 5, make it fun to visit, work, live and play downtown." I think with this particular property, we have an opportunity to do all of these things in one simple block. When we were discussing this on January 30th, a lot of us said, in fact, the entire council had echoed the fact that they kind of saw this as a cultural center for Stillwater, as did I, as do I. I think that, well, I think your points are well taken and I think they're commendable in the respect that you want to ensure what is best for downtown. I think at this point, we have analyzed this to the point that it is no longer productive. The Puma Plan was an excellent plan, took into account a fair amount of data. Some of this data is maybe not as relevant today as it was in 2005, however, most of it carries a fair amount of water. And I think after reviewing this plan in detail, looking at things or commissioning another comprehensive plan and spending god knows how much, hundreds of thousands of dollars to get another plan and to gather more data, at this point is not the best use of taxpayer funds. Block 34 is the catalyst we're looking for, in my opinion. This is a block that if done right, I think will help, the surrounding blocks will help downtown, the Main Street District. I like the adage that it's okay to walk a couple of blocks. As a physician, I encourage you all to do that. But I think the old adage, and I hate to say this because I had a professor in med school that used to say this ad nauseam, but paralysis by analysis is something that fits this particular instance fairly well. So, all that to say, I am actually in favor of moving forward with Phase 1 as it's, as it's spelled out here now. I would not be opposed at all for bidding this out through competitive bidding to private industry. At the same time, we're moving forward with Phase 1, because Phase 1 is something that's going to happen anyway. We're going to need utilities there, we're going to need water there, et cetera, et cetera. And there is no structures, at least from what I saw, planned in Phase 1. So I don't see any reason why can't, why we can't move forward with this now while at the same time, kind of testing what the interest is from private industry. And that's, that's kind of how I see this right now.
Well, and I just, I'm going to throw this in here. I don't view this as the catalyst for downtown. I think over the last eight years with the mixture of business that's already been established and new businesses, there's already momentum going. Block 34 and Block 35 hopefully will just carry on the opportunity for downtown to be everything that we, that this community wants it to be. So I don't want people that are already, have businesses or who have owned businesses feel like we're counting on Block 34 to be the catalyst. There's already something happening with downtown. I think we're just wanting to continue this momentum to keep it going. And so I just, that's, I want to make sure I'm said.
So I think, I think you're right. There's definitely a ton of momentum downtown. This isn't like we've got to jumpstart it. And I think the Puma Plan's actually probably looking at it from a perspective from before Zenati's was open, right? So, so I think there's definitely some updating that would have to happen there. In term, and just to address your, your issue, John, excuse me, Counselor Wedlock, I don't, I don't mean to say I think we've got to go through and spend a whole bunch more money and do a whole new comprehensive plan. I like the Puma Plan. Maybe we can just tweak it a little bit. I just want us, if we're talking about moving forward because we like this and we think it, it made sense then and it makes sense now, then let's, let's make sure that we're doing that as part of that plan as a whole and we're not just saying, "Okay, well, we'll just do that." I mean, it sounds to me like you're saying, or at least you could be convinced that you're saying, "Let's bring that whole thing back up. Let's, let's figure out how to institute the whole thing as a whole or try to, you know, amend it in some way, but look at a plan and this being a piece of a plan and not just a thing on its own." So to me, it makes perfect sense to say, "Yeah, it's exactly what they, what they envisioned in that plan, but it's part of something else too." And it makes perfect sense to me if we're saying we're doing that because we're also following some of these other things. It doesn't make sense to me if that's all we're looking at. I don't want to bring another planner in. I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the answer.
Well, and I mean, like you said, if, if we need to look at it, take a step back and look at the bigger picture, you know, as a whole beyond Block 34, that's fine. I'm all, I'm all in for further discussion, but the fact remains that we've been talking about this for, well, we've been talking seriously about it for seven years. That land's been open for 100 years, as Vice Mayor Darlington brought up. If we want to talk about it more, great. At some point, we're going to have to move forward doing something. And granted, I'm the young guy here, I know I'm a little impatient. I like, I like to jump in there and get things done, but at the very least, things like utilities, electric, water are going to have to go there anyway. So while we're discussing this further as a larger plan, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward with Phase 1 as it's presented here.
Other than the $400,000?
Other than the...
We haven't accepted...
I'm sorry, other than the money.
We'll get to that.
Donation, we're on this before. So, I do, I do want to thank you for bringing up the Puma Plan because it is not just, the Puma Plan is not just a plan for Block 34. It just happens to have a picture of Block 34 in it. It has Washington Street, it has University Corner, it has a lot of different ideas about parking and Wi-Fi hotspots and a lot of, you know, wayfinding ideas. It's, it's not just Block 34. I was really amazed when I first read the Puma Plan, how closely it aligns with a broad look at, at least the central part of Stillwater. And I think it, if we, I agree, we can't just do Block 34 and go home and pat ourselves on the back. It has to be part of a big picture and I agree. We have to start someplace, but start, let's start, we don't have to start fast.
Okay. I will weigh in as well. First of all, I appreciate all of the thought that's gone into this from staff and from the community and from the counselors before and now. We need sales tax now. We know that we, there's no debate on that. I do think that the area that we create is, will be a great catalyst to bring other things in. I liked what Shannon said. I liked the container idea. It's not permanent, but it allows, first of all, opportunities for people, to draw people downtown. I think of this as, someone said this earlier this week, it's been there 100 years, it could be a town square now. We've waited 100 years and we could turn this into a town square that will attract other things to make all of downtown more vibrant. There's a lot of possibilities and I just want to mention this, there's a lot of space in downtown that is unoccupied that could be drawing sales tax. And every time I walk through it, walk downtown, I, I just wonder what it could be doing. If there's an empty building, what does that do to the person next to it? Whether the building's nice or not, we need to help not have so much, what I will call... Whether the building's nice or not, we need to help not have so much, what I will call, empty businesses and blight, I'll just say it. We want it to all be attractive, and I think this gathering spot, I just want to bring people in. And I think the gathering spot does it. It brings people in. It is a city block. It is the people's block. And 100 years from now, we aren't going to be here, but someone's going to be here. I still want it to be a town square, because there's so many possibilities. I like the competitive bidding, and again, I love the big container. I'd like to know more about that. And now I would like to ask the city manager, if we want to do Phase One, can we do it financially?
That's a loaded question. Well, that depends on some other things happening. And we should be able to tell you that within, let's see, this is April, a month and a half. There are some other things that could occur during this budget year that could free up some funds for that. But there's one part of this discussion that concerns me, and it has nothing to do with what goes there. But what I want to make very clear is that the buried electricity, the sewer, the water is contingent on this conceptual plan that John drew up. If we're going to do something else, if we're going to allow for containers, we need to bring you back something that shows where those are, so that we can arrange the infrastructure so we don't have to go back and tear it out later if we do something else. And frankly, if, I do know, because we talked about the projects in Tulsa and Oklahoma City that use containers, and I do know that we would have to change some of our code requirements and ordinances, could be relatively easily done, because we can just steal the ideas from Tulsa and Oklahoma City. But one thing that might make, for instance, the restrooms a lot cheaper, be to put it inside one of those, especially if code would allow us to do that. And I think it can be made to look pretty attractive. But there's, again, staff would want some direction on how much, where you line the whole thing in a horseshoe and allow a big green space in the middle and a view towards a future stage. Okay.
I think this is where a really well-written RFP comes into play. If we can commit ourselves to, I have no idea how to arrange things. I'm not an architect or a developer. I do know what I want to see, but if we have a well-written RFP that says, this is what we really want, this is what we want to do right now, we're thinking that in the future we'd like to do this, it has to be, you know, clear space to a stage perhaps, there has to be hookups for da-da-da-da. Somebody with much more knowledge of design and development can do that than I can.
I actually think we have staff that can bring you several renderings of how that might look.
I mean, they may, but I think the request for proposal would bring in people who are not city, who may have, I mean, may have an interest in developing something there, and then we are able to...
Oh, you're talking about at their expense?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. That changes the picture.
I mean, you know my mantra, the city needs to do what it can do well. We need to get other people to do what they do well. We need to make it as easy as possible for people to do things that they do well. I don't want to be in the design business. I don't want to be in the landlord business. I don't want to be in any business except streets and water and lights and a great city.
Could the container idea, would that be part of an RFP where we would ask people to make a proposal? We're not asking the city to be the landlord, correct?
The city would be the landlord.
We own the land. We own the land.
Okay. Someone else managing it? Or perhaps us? Is that...
Well, it's going to depend, because you can't just hand it over necessarily. You'll have to, I mean, you'll have to establish branches.
Private, public, partners?
Which they can operate, things like that.
How much space they would get, specific area.
But I think we have to be committed to what we want before we ask people to put the time and, you know, their own development money and expertise into something for us to just say, well, no, no, we really don't want this. This doesn't, isn't, we have to be really clear about what we want and be committed to it.
Agree.
To do the utilities and the water and electric, I mean, it has to be, obviously it needs to make sense for what we want to put there. Is there just a, my lack of knowledge, basic way to improve that, just to...
Well, believe it or not, staff had kind of looked at this particular option. So one thought is, again, depending on how much space you would want to devote to that, because I believe those containers are 10 or 12 feet. I can't remember. Are they 10 or...
Or 20?
Wide.
You could do 10 or 20, right?
Yeah, they're about 10.
10 feet wide. So if you used an entire perimeter in a U shape that faced the west, where the opening faced the west, if you allowed for that many, I think it would be possible to run a perimeter of sewer in a U shape and a perimeter of, I'll look over here at Lauren, a perimeter of electric that could be reasonably easy to hook up to. And if that idea ever went away, you still had access to those utilities. The sewer water, there's certain spacing that has to be, but...
So as far as map resolution, all you need is say, we want this corner. And that's as specific as you'd have to get?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question.
So what I'm asking is, as far as how specific you need to be for where the utilities are going, you would just say, we want this corner? And just saying that quadrant of the block, that's as specific as you need to get for putting in the utilities?
From the big guns.
Dan Blankenship, Deputy City Manager and SUA Director. I think we can do utility, if it's relocation or undergrounding. We can do stuff around the perimeter, but without having a pretty good layout on the interior of knowing not only where things are going to be or what they're going to be, not only putting them to the right location, but making them right-sized is very, very difficult. And so for us to just go in there and lay something in that might or might not work, I just don't think is really in the best utilization of those funds. I think, you know, we can do those things, and we can do those things probably rather quickly, if we have a good plan that we can count on. But if we're any at all, if the crystal ball, you know, has any kind of cloudiness in it at all, there's going to be some risk there. And so I don't think that waiting for, to put the utilities in until we have a plan will cause any real delay in the ultimate development of the block. But if we don't go in and put them in, and we spend that money, and it's not the right size or at the right location, then we're going to be, you know, doing that work again. And I don't think that that's a real good approach. So I would encourage you to say, let's wait until we get a plan that we feel pretty comfortable with, and then we'll move forward and we'll put the utilities in that are necessary to serve that plan. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you. What if, just a question, can we say we want to move ahead with Phase One with outputting anything on it until we hear back from the city? You said about a month and a half you could have something, some kind of plan back to us?
Well, again, depending on, it depends on so many things. Yes. But I mean, if I understand correctly, what we want to do is Phase One with the possibility of having retail in shipping containers?
You know, I don't know that we can commit ourselves to exactly what we want, other than what we said in January. We want green space. We want the potential for entertainment on a stage. We want the potential for a farmer's market, art show, et cetera, et cetera. We want potential for food trucks. And I don't think it's our job to, I mean, yes, the money's important, but let's not stall waiting to hear how much money we have. I mean, we need to be, I mean, everybody has said, this is a block that doesn't look good. Let's make it look good somehow and not commit ourselves to something 100 years down the road, but get started on doing something. It's our job to say, what needs to be on there, and somebody else needs to figure out how to do it.
Is that why you would like RFPs up in the first phase?
Yes.
I agree. It doesn't hurt anything.
And if it has to be before we bury the electric and water and sewer, then let's do that.
What do you want them to request, what do you want to request that they propose?
Well, we say, this is what we absolutely want to have on this block. We want to have enough green space for 2,000 people to listen to a concert. We want to have a possibility of a place for people to perform. We want to have a place where people can picnic or kids to play. I mean, we say the exact things that we want. We may have some things that it'd be really nice if this were here, but it's not in our must-have list. And how do you do that? We want 10% to be hospitality. We want 10% to be retail. And we want it started and finished by, complete by a date. And we want to, I mean, it just has to be that specific.
Yeah. It's just, I guess, difficult for me to imagine who is going to come bid on, build us a full block of public amenities and a couple little shops. And who's going to say, I can do that and make money doing it?
I don't know. That's why you have to put a request out.
Okay.
I mean, you know, nobody replies. Okay, then we have to figure out something else. But until we put it out there, I think our job is defining what we absolutely want at the start level on that block.
And we pretty much settled that in January.
We did that. And although I would quibble with the large permanent farmer's market thing, I think that is too much.
How about the pavilion? Because that would be permanent.
I couldn't even figure out, I couldn't see that on the slides very well.
Is that the far...
But it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
That type of building is not hard to move if it was there, so.
Right. Counselor Joyce, that didn't quite answer your question.
Well, I mean, I guess an RFP makes more sense to me if we're defining a piece of the block that we're saying, we want retail here, or we want a container store here, or even if you just went on the container store idea and you said, okay, here's a block, come tell us what you could do on this block with a container store. You get the whole block, you know, propose what you think you can do with it. I don't think anybody's going to try to cover that whole block with containers. I don't think that's feasible either. Or if we just said, you know, we think the corner of Ninth and Husband is sort of where we think some kind of retail would go, let's, you know, define that area and say, it's going to be part of this other stuff, there's going to be this other stuff there, but what we're asking you to propose is, what would you build, you know, and how would you build it and that kind of thing? And maybe we get, you know, the edges of other stuff included in it, but they're not going to finish the whole block for us, I'm sure, as an RFP.
Well, we don't know until we ask. But I do think specifically saying, we want this corner of the block or this area to be, to have this, or we want this much space dedicated to hospitality, retail, where would it fit best? You know, what do you think? We want to have open view to downtown. We want to have a nice walkway on Eighth Street, walkway, bikeway on Eighth Street. We want to make people flow from here to Main Street to the library and fit it in.
If we did the utilities, why wouldn't individual people just, I mean, I don't know, because it would get into the landlord business, but individual people could come in and bid on their own container. I mean, I...
Right.
I don't think we want to run the container store. I just keep saying that. That's an actual place. I don't mean that.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
It seems difficult to say, we're going to put all these containers up, and we're going to pay to, you know, put the utilities to them, we're going to do this stuff, and then they're going to come to the city and say, okay, I want to rent that one. To me, that idea only makes sense if we're saying, someone, some company is going to come put this here, and we're going to lease them that section of land for some length of time, and they're going to handle the tenants, and they're going to do that. And they're going to tell us, here's what we need utilities, and then we can tell the SUA where they need it.
Exactly.
Which is all well and good. But again, I just want, if we're going to do that, I just want us to know what step two is, and what step three is, and what step four is, and not just what step two and three and four is on Block 34, but what it is on, you know, Main Street, and what it is on, and how are we going to, you know, if we're saying, we think this is going to, putting this thing on Ninth and Husband is going to have this effect on Main Street, what do we need to be doing to ensure that's happening? And what do we need to be doing to connect those things? And that, it just needs to be part of the plan. And we focus, we're focusing a lot on this little piece of it, and that's fine. We've just got to focus on something to get something done, or so we say. But we can't lose sight of this bigger picture and figure out what, how does this connect to the next step? And how are we going to use this to do something? Because I really don't want to just build a cafe at the corner of Ninth and Husband, and 10 years later, there's a corner of the cafe of Ninth and Husband.
Well, I'm hoping it's going to utilize the resources that we have. I mean, I'm hoping for the entrepreneur that doesn't have money to rent $300,000 from rent a month or buy a building, start a small business, and then as it grows and they get successful, then there's a linkage, there's a partnership, there's something that happens where they move to downtown Main Street and take an empty spot that's, you know, gives them some momentum to do that. To me, I see that being a great way to grow the downtown area. You've got to start somewhere.
Yeah. And again, not to overuse the word, but catalyst. I mean, that's the definition of a catalyst, right? Is to make a chemical reaction more efficient. So if we can make private enterprise and starting small businesses a more efficient process, because I mean, anybody that's started a business knows that capital expenditures is the death of you. They're hard to overcome. That's why 90% of small businesses fail in the first two years, is because of those capital expenditures. So if we can somehow mitigate that expense, instead of having to pay $2,500 for a Main Street storefront, you know, $1,200 for a container storefront two blocks off of Main Street, that seems like a no-brainer to me.
Well, I think that something new, like container, block, what do you call them? Shipping containers, yeah. You know, Stillwater's great, and I wish everybody would go right down on Main Street and fill up all those buildings. But this is different. I mean, I don't want just a piece of grass that looks like a piece of grass in every other, how many cities did you show us? I mean, yeah, Tulsa, Oklahoma City beat us to it, but it's something that's different. I mean, yeah, Tulsa, Oklahoma City beat us to it, but it's something that's different, something that's a little bit more exciting, and it happens to serve the purpose of moveability and not that, and reuse, too. I loved how Shannon explained that that could, you know, once they're used up in one space, they go to something else.
Yes.
So.
But I'd also think, Counselor Joyce, we, in January, we asked the staff, give us phases for Block 34. Well, give us phases for what's after Block 34. What, what do we need to do to connect? I mean, this is just not downtown. This is not just for downtown. We talked about revitalizing downtown. This is for Stillwater. This is for the entire city. And when Counselor Wedlake read the framework summary, you know, it's children, it's adults, it's adolescents, it's all kinds of every age of person, every part of Stillwater. And so, we give the staff a call to bring us, you know, how do we hook this to Form-Based Code area? How do we hook this to Washington Street? How does, what does it mean wayfinding? What does it mean, you know, two years from now, what do we do?
Okay. As long as we're expanding the conversation, I'm happy.
Oh, okay.
I, I agree. I agree, yes.
Well, I can't believe that I'm going to say this.
Yeah, oh.
But what you're describing is, I almost think we need an architect to come up with that vision and then help with the RFP. Does this make sense to you? Because I think it's beyond staff's ability in terms of.
Well, I, if we need somebody professional outside of staff to do a really good RFP, then I would love to see what that looks like. And, I mean, we have to do it right.
Well, I think what you could do is hand them, because I, and I'm trying to find out here, everybody has talked about the Puma Plan and that they like it, and they like other parts of it, and there are probably parts of it that need to be updated. Kind of some of the internet issues have come up since '05 and have changed retail. But I'm not suggesting updating it. I'm just saying that, in general, the concepts in here, contained in this plan are what the council likes, and we want to start with Block 34 and get an RFP for, under the terms that you've outlined, with the things that the council would like to see. And what would that look like? And how do we write the RFP?
I don't know how you write the RFP.
No, I'm talking that, that an architect could tell you that, I believe. And maybe we could find, I don't know.
Public-private partnerships?
Donation.
Donations, yeah.
No, people need to make money. If we're asking professional people to do this work, unless they would like to, unless they would really like to.
Right.
I just think, I just can't emphasize enough, it has to be a very clear RFP, and it has to be, we, the five of us, have to have bought in totally on it so that people can trust that this is what we are going to do.
We don't want to be Oklahoma City or Tulsa, but if these cities have already done it, can the staff reach out to them and ask how they did it before we, I mean, before we talk about hiring and?
Absolutely.
I mean, I just, I feel like probably some knowledge that they can give us that would help us figure out what this next step needs to look like.
Okay, so, if we're not done talking, we're not done talking, but I'll throw this out there. Who wants to make a motion? And word it correctly. Vice Mayor, you look like you do.
Before, before we make a motion, I'll.
Okay. John, you can do it.
Yeah. If we hired an architect to get some plans or some sketches together, how long a process would that be? To hire the architect, to get sketches down on paper? I mean, I have no concept of how long that would take.
I would think two or three months.
Two or three months?
Well, I don't know.
Well, you have to go through the process of selecting the architect first. Then, once you select the architect, then you charge them with the specific project, and then that'll.
Does that have to be bid out? Is that a competitive bidding?
It's not necessarily competitive bidding, but it's a, it's a similar process where we would ask for requests for proposals, since it's for professional services.
Is it really out of staff's realm to call and find out how it was done and before we move forward? I mean, we're talking budget here, and I know it's important to think about.
That's why I couldn't believe I was saying something. But certainly, we could do that.
I would like to try it that way before we spend any money. And if you, at the next meeting, tell us that that's just not possible without, we need to do this and this and this, but I think we should try.
So, the question at this point is, can staff give us direction on what needs to happen so we can order a good, we can issue a good RFP for a, I don't know what we're calling this, container farm?
Not a container farm, no.
No.
What?
I don't know if we need to be that specific. I love the idea. I mean, I know I just said, we need to be very specific, but I, this arm doesn't know what this arm is doing. No, I, we have to be specific in the sense of, we want hospitality and retail. I'm making this up. We want hospitality and retail on 35% of Block 34.
Okay. And so then you get potentially a proposal that is a container grouping, and maybe you get a proposal that's a restaurant, and maybe you get a proposal that's something else?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then we get to decide. Or, I mean, there are other parameters that we would have.
I mean, well, I, I don't know. It sounds to me like that is an RFP, that then you've got a way, you know, you've got some people who are going to say 100% retail, some people are going to say 100% restaurant, you know, or some mix of the two. And it seems like it would be difficult, if I was trying to bid on that RFP, to figure out what was going to happen. Like, I don't know, do they want a restaurant? Do they not want a restaurant? Do they?
Okay. Do what, what we have to say? Do we want just hospitality? Do we want a bar? Do we want open cafe seating? Do we want a card shop? I don't know.
I, I guess, I mean, I'm certainly open to exploring what that might look like, but I guess it sounds like what we need is some guidance on what, how could we possibly write an RFP like this? Because I don't, one that would actually get bids. Because I'm, I'm afraid what we're talking about is, is too vague or too broad to really get somebody who's dedicated, unless we're saying, we know what we want from a, at least a, you know, when we're talking about a small portion of the block, they kind of have to know, do you want it to be one or the other, or do you want it to be a mix? Maybe we could be that specific. We, we need guidance on what that RFP would look like, and what we could say. And I don't know what the next step is in getting that guidance.
We've, we've made the decision, we don't want a permanent building on there, and if it's a container or it's a, you know, it's temporary. And then we need utilities for that, and we need to think, and there needs to be a combination of retail and hospitality and, you know.
Green space and. If we move forward with a motion tonight that says we want to move forward with Phase One to here, so we can get to the RFPs, do we have to get to the RFPs by moving forward?
Well, I, I mean.
Makes sense, right?
True. I mean, you, you, you want to get to the RFP point at, at some point, but as I understand the presentation tonight, Phase One does not necessarily address the items that you're talking about in an RFP. So I don't know that you're ready for a motion tonight, quite frankly.
I was going to say, can we, can we?
You could just table this matter for a couple of weeks and let staff sit down and try to figure out if there's a way to go forward with this, and bring you back some more stuff to look at.
Or have a designate, I mean, have a designated study session? I mean, it's hard to talk, I mean, to talk about this.
You know, that gets back to Counselors Wedlake's thing of, we have talked about this and talked about this and talked about this. And study sessioned it, and.
I just, I just don't think there's a decision we can, that we're going to make tonight on, on what this exactly needs to be. I, I would make a motion to table it until next meeting for two weeks.
We can't do it.
Seventeenth.
April 17th.
I don't.
Until the next meeting with available agenda space.
There we go. Available agendas.
And request that, that staff provide guidance on what an RFP process would look like. Can I do that?
We have the agenda space on however much space you want on any meeting. I mean, I don't, can you pick a date? We got April 17th.
I say April 17th. We don't want to push it forever. Let's just say, take two weeks, figure out what we need to do to get an RFP issued.
Is that enough time for staff?
We can certainly make contact with, with other cities and find out how they did it. I think if it, if it's encouraging at all, every single one of the cities that I looked at, every single one of the cities that I talked to about these types of issues, it is tough. You're making a decision that's going to be in place for a very long time. So, I wouldn't be discouraged that it's hard, because it should be a little bit, and they, they all had a difficult time deciding what to do with their spaces. Wausau took 10 years, so another couple of weeks is not going to.
We have them beat by 90 years.
Yeah. I mean, we, it's, it's a difficult decision, and it should be. And I don't think that anyone should be discouraged that it takes a little more time to figure out what to do with something that's kind of important.
Well, I, I will restate my motion to table until April 17 and request that staff provide information on RFP.
May I ask a question now or after the second?
It's, I mean, you can technically, under the rules, a motion to table is a privileged motion, and.
We just table.
There's a second, and then you vote.
Okay. Second.
We have a motion and a second to table until, until April 17. Any more discussion about how we're going to do this? Please vote. And the motion passes with a vote of three to two. Thank you for the discussion. The most important part of this is the discussion, and thank you to everybody who weighed in. And we will continue. Okay, that takes us to resolutions. Resolution number CC-2017-7, a resolution acknowledging city council authorization and approval for the submission of an application for federal state grant funding to construct taxiway, realign parallel taxiway to RW-17-35, middle third portion of parallel taxiway D and bypass taxi lane at Stillwater Regional Airport through the FAA AIP Grant 3-40-0090-025-2017 Project. Mr. Dorman.
The title is self-explanatory. This is the taxiway project we've been speaking about, and in your package, you received a copy of the resolution that has the break, the approximate cost breakdown that would pay for the project.
Counselors, is there a motion? Questions?
No que, I didn't have a question.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-2017-7. Please vote. And CC-2017-7 is approved with a vote of five to zero. That takes us to ordinances. On first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3362, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 821 North Duck Street from O Office District and RT Residential 2, 1 and 2 Family District to CG Commercial General District.
Counselors?
Motion to move to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance CC-2017, or, excuse me, ordinance number 3362. Please vote. And ordinance number 3362 is advanced to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Mr. Dorman on second reading. Ordinance.
Ordinance number 3360, an ordinance rezoning attractive land located at 707 East Airport Road, IG Industrial District to CG Commercial General.
Counselor, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Ordinance number 3360, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, ordinance number 3360 is, is adopted with a vote of five to zero. Mr. Dorman on second reading.
Ordinance number 3361, an ordinance relating to public health and safety revising the 911 emergency number ordinance, Section 5, emergency telephone service and fee, thereby maintaining of the current 5% user fee established and declaring an emergency. And since this has an emergency clause, it will require two votes.
Okay, counselors.
Motion to approve.
Adopt.
Adopt, oh, yeah. I had that written down on the other one. Motion to adopt.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt 3361. Please vote. And the ordinance 3361 is adopted with a vote of five to zero. We need a second vote.
Adopting the emergency clause.
To adopt the emergency clause.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the emergency clause is adopted with, and that moves us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Anything to report tonight, ma'am?
Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, Mayor One item. Final public meeting for the Transportation Enhancement Plan will be Thursday, April the 13th, at the Stillwater Community Center from 5:30 to 7:30. During the meeting, you'll be able to provide ideas for transportation goals and objectives you would like to see improved in the next 20 years. If you're unable to attend, there is an online forum at the city website that will allow you to submit your ideas there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors, news.
I've got something. Your input is needed to develop the 12th Avenue Land Use Plan. This Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Stillwater Community Center, city staff will share a variety of information on the project. You can find a map of the identified area at stillwater.org. For more information, you can also contact the Development Services Department.
Vice Mayor?
Okay. With severe weather season upon us, it's the perfect time to make sure you're ready in case of an emergency. If you've not done so, register your storm shelter with the City of Stillwater at stillwater.org/shelter. That's so important. We don't want to find you later.
Well, thank you for that.
Or we do want to find you sooner.
But if we know where to look, it helps.
Absolutely.
Your registered area can be.
Even if you don't have a storm shelter, you can still register.
That you're in your bathroom.
That you're somewhere.
Your registered area can be an above-ground safe room, below-ground storm shelter basement or other area of the house determined to provide protection from a disaster, weather devastation.
Very good advice. Counselor Joyce.
Council members and city staff will be hosting office hours throughout the month of April. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts about the 2018 proposed budget and what you'd like to see in Stillwater. For times and locations, go to stillwater.org. Do not go to my Facebook page, because I put the wrong time up. So go to stillwater.org to actually, to get relevant and accurate information.
Thank you. And Counselor Wedlake?
If you've put off doing your taxes until now and need assistance filing, AARP tax aides will be at the Stillwater Public Library through April 18. Several tax products are also offered at the library to help you in filing, such as 1040 forms. 1040 forms. If you want more information for this free, emphasis on free, service, go to library.stillwater.org.
Okay, yes.
I would just like to say one other thing.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to the city, to the Stillwater High School. They're a huge success. Their SMAC Week, their year-long fundraising, they raised high school students, raised $170,000. And this goes to, they choose a different organization every year, for this money, this went to Empower this year. Congratulations to the high school students, they did a great job, and their sponsors, their adult sponsors.
Absolutely, and they raised it with the help of their parents and the community.
The minor thing is, fortunately, that's in kind, I think they're going to have a new parking lot.
Fifty thousand is in kind, yeah.
Very good. Okay, counselors, is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting and move to SUA, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, city council is adjourned, and we're moving to Stillwater Utilities Authority. Call the meeting to order. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove or clarify an item, or is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us to general orders, Mr. McNichol.
Lauren Smith will have a report on proposed sole source purchase.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. I know you've been here for a while, so I'll try to make this short and sweet. Stillwater Electric Utility is ready to deploy smart grid technologies into our distribution system. Right now, we're looking, there's a couple components of smart grid technology, and those are distribution automation and automated meter infrastructure. And so, this report mainly deals with distribution automation. However, in the following weeks, we're getting ready to release an RFQ for automated meter infrastructure, which will stand as the platform for many other smart technologies in the future. So, we're really moving towards some great stuff here for our distribution system. Distribution automation really consists of three primary components. You have what's called a recloser, or an automatic switch on a line, a controller that sits below the switch, which is, acts as the brains of the switch, and substation relaying that all communicate. And so, what it really promotes is what we call a self-healing system, which, when you have a fault on a line, these switches act very quickly to minimize the amount of customers that are out in one spot, and to, in some instances, to backfeed power into spots, and really isolate the fault and keep the customers on very quickly. One of the great benefits is engineering around lightning. We have, when we have storms come through, our linemen can't get in the air until the lightning passes, actually till it's about 15 miles from them to be safe. This new distribution automation does this very quickly. Linemen don't have to be called out to switch anything around in these areas. So, it's really going to be a great tool for us. Let's see, the, you know, about 10 years ago, we started standardizing on equipment for our substations, specifically relaying with Schweitzer Laboratories. So, you know, this is truly best-in-class equipment that's used industry-wide, and we started standardizing on Schweitzer. We also started standardizing on the switches that we use, based off of our experiences with them. You know, in order to have a good distributive automation system, you have to have the right equipment in the right places. And if you have multiple manufacturers of switches and components all over your system, it makes it very difficult to store spare parts, to keep up on how they operate, and all those things. So, when you standardize on this equipment, it really makes your system a lot more efficient. I've got some examples here I can put up, because I wanted to guys, you know, distribution automation, that sounds kind of, it might sound very foreign. So, what we, this is a very simple idea here, and you can see right where I'm circling right here, this is a feeder, feeder four here, and the clusters here are all customers. And as you see, we go down Perkins Road to the south, really, our exposure, our line exposure increases to the number of customers that we have here. So, you can see how the clusters, this is all Perkins Road, the Sixth Street area where it's all clustered. Well, the idea is that you put a recloser switch here, and if you have a problem, this is a lot of exposed line out here, so if you have a tree fall into it, or lightning strike hit out here, well, it takes out the breaker, all the way, all the way back to the feeder, all the way back to the breaker, and all these customers are out, until you can resolve these issues out here. But by having distribution automation here, this switch would very quickly open, allow the circuit breaker to close back, feeding all of these customers, while we're out here fixing the line away from the fault. And so, there's several examples. I really want to thank Kyle Moret, Lee Jackson, Vernon Hall. These guys did this all in-house, designed these systems based off their experience and knowledge of our system that would best fit. So, here's another example of a lot of line exposure. We have a line that goes out to Lake Carl Blackwell, and you can see the big cluster here of all the people, but this big line's exposed out here, and if we have issues out here, it affects all these customers. Again, switch is open, and we get to get our customers back up better. But I'll show you a real extreme version, I'm proud of this one for Kyle, because this is truly a self-healing system in the sense that it use, it ties automatically multiple feeders together to truly isolate the problem and get the most customers back on while we're repairing equipment. So, that's a little bit of a taste of distribution automation. You know, I have a recommendation here for a sole source purchase. There's one sole supplier in Oklahoma, the regional supplier, and that's KD Johnson, and they supply all SEL and the TEL equipment that we're looking at here. So, it's making this a sole source purchase. And so, I'd be happy to entertain any questions along those lines before I read the recommendation.
Trustees?
Sounds good.
Think we're ready for the recommendation.
Okay, the recommend, the staff recommends that the trustees authorize a sole source purchase for the recloser equipment from TEL facilitated by KD Johnson, the amount of $146,000, and that includes a 10% contingency. Staff also recommends sole source purchase for the controllers from SEL facilitated by KD Johnson, the amount of $201,000, which includes a 10% contingency. And finally, authorize a sole source purchase for the electrical substation relay equipment from SEL facilitated by KD Johnson, in the amount of $84,000. And those were the three components that I kind of talked about that make up distributed automation.
Okay, any trustee who can say what he just said in a motion?
What he said.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Accept.
Accept your recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept and approve what was recommended. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, it is approved. That moves us to item B, consider the Grand River Dam Authority GRDA Purchase Power and Sell Agreement, Third Amendment to the Capacity Purchase Agreement, SUA 16-06.
It's the Lauren Smith Show tonight.
It's the Boyne Show again. Good evening, trustees again, Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. This is the Third Amendment to the Grand River Dam Authority Agreement for Section F2, and this deals with the generation capacity payment at Stillwater Energy Center. When we negotiated this contract back in 2012, we had a crystal ball. It was somewhat foggy, because we didn't truly know how these engines were going to operate in the market, but after about the first month of operation, it got very clear. And so, we have gone back through the first two amendments and a letter of agreement to try to true up, true up those things that we found. And this Third Amendment specifically deals with what's called the daily generation capacity, and we realized quickly after that first month that our interpretation of how that was to be administered was quite different than GRDA's. Basically, I would say polar opposites, but we were able to negotiate over about six months, seven months here, and really kind of come to the middle and agree upon how DGC should be administered. And so, this is truing up that, and it truly allows us, rather than being all or none, basically, if you were running an engine or a generator and it tripped, you would lose the capacity payment for the day. Well, that's $4,000 a unit, so $12,000 a day if you had a lightning storm come through. And this really modifies that to an hourly basis. And so, it really, it really trues that up for both of us, so that it can, we can get the most benefit out of it. And so...
Go right ahead.
And I will entertain any questions before the recommendation.
Questions of trustees?
I imagine Mr. Dorman read this at some point?
Yes, I'm the reason he's on the agenda.
Yes, and thank you for that.
I guess, is there a recommendation?
Beside reading it, is it good?
Yes, ma'am, this, it, I think more fully portrays what the agreement was when we went into this with them a couple of years ago.
And hopefully, there won't be another amendment, but if we see an issue, we're going to go, and we're going to get it straightened out, because we have to do what's in the best interest of our customer, and that truly is for us to be the champions of that, so. The recommendation, staff recommends that the trustees approve the Third Amendment to Exhibit F2 Capacity Purchase Agreement of the GRDA Purchase Power and Sell Agreement.
Is there a motion, trustees?
Motion to accept staff recommendation and approve the amendment.
We have a motion and a second to approve SUA 16-06, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, that is approved.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That moves us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General manager?
Actually, I have one item. There will be counselor and trustee office hours, Thursday the 6th, from 6 to 7:30 at the Aspen at Lakeview, 1908 North Perkins.
Okay.
BM, yes. BM, not AM.
And I would like to thank the counselors/trustees for doing these office hours, they're very much appreciated, and we really appreciate the effort. Thank you. Who's doing the office hours this time?
That's me. This Thursday is me.
This Thursday is you, okay.
By yourself?
Unless somebody wants to join me.
I'll be there.
Okay, trustees, discussion. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we are adjourned and moving to Stillwater Economic Development Authority. I call the meeting to order. And trustees, does anyone wish to remove something from the consent docket, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And with, with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket from Stillwater Economic Development Authority is approved. That takes us to...
May I make one comment?
Absolutely.
I really appreciate the report about the budget amendments. Very helpful, thank you.
That takes us to reports from officers and boards. General counsel?
Request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307(c)(10) for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business. Second, request an executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307b(3) for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol?
No items.
Trustees?
No items.
Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
Is there a motion and a second, or, there is a motion and a second to move to executive session, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, we are moving to executive session.